Good morning. The Committee on Health, Economic Development, Homeland Security, and Senior Citizen now convenes this public hearing. Public hearing notices were given to the media, first notice on Friday, June 12, 2015, and second notice on Tuesday, June 16, 2015. For the record, today is Friday, June 19, 2015, and the time now is 9:05 a.m. The committee will hear and accept testimonies, both oral and written, on Bill 115-33 and 116-33. I'd like to recognize the Vice Chair of the Committee, Senator Tony Ada.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator, for being here, and also for all of you who are here today, the Esser family, for being here this morning. We'll start off with Bill 115-33. I'd like to ask those who have signed up to please come forward. We have Mr. Fred and Alyssa Esser, if you can please just join up here, Mr. Ray Vega, Phil Tidinko from the AG's office, Dr. Ishmael, and Benny Pinaula. Maybe we can add some chairs so we can all just take it on. Great. Thank you again very much for being here this morning. Just a brief synopsis of what Bill 115 is. First of all, it was introduced by myself and 11 other, or 12 other colleagues of mine. And so this is an act to add a new Chapter 82A to Division 4 and to add a new subsection 82201H to Chapter 82, both of Title 10 Guam Code annotated, "to provide for assisted outpatient treatment services for which persons with certain mental illnesses, we shall be known as the Baby Alexia Law." And Baby Alexa is here with us this morning. I want to thank her too for being so cute and for being here. Of course, her brother, Roman. Thank you very much, Roman, for being here as well. This bill really, the intent of this bill is to close a gap, a loophole in services that we have over at the Guam Department, Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center. It is a treatment, I'm sorry, it's outpatient treatment that there's certain criteria that individuals have to meet before the department could seek a petition from the courts to get these individuals into assisted outpatient treatment. And one of the prerequisites is that this individual is currently in an inpatient setting, is going to be ending that treatment program, or transitioning out of mental health court, or is a former client of the department. And so, you know, we've seen in, you know, we really don't like to speak so much about the incident, but unfortunately, we do. We've seen that the incident that took place with Baby Alexia, that individual was a former client of the department, and that had this individual still been monitored and being treated for the situation that she has, then perhaps this type of incident would have been avoided. And so this legislation is meant to protect the community, but also protect these individuals from harm, from harm from themselves. And so we want to move this legislation forward. And also, we take into consideration that the Esser family, they've been here for four years on Guam, will be relocating. And so we want to ensure that, before you do leave, that we take care of this, we address this problem that unfortunately you've experienced, and ensure that Baby Alexia, she'll always be remembered by the people of Guam. And so, thank you very much. I'll now ask the Essers if you'd like to provide a testimony.
I'll just turn on.
Please press the button.
There we go. My name is Fred Esser, this is my wife Alyssa, and my son Roman and Alexia. On January 1st, our 10-month-old daughter, Alexia, was punched in the face by a 44-year-old woman. Why would a 44-year-old woman brutally attack an innocent little girl? It turns out, the same question was asked five years ago about the same woman. In that case, the woman attacked a 23-month-old girl, and ultimately, the girl's father. Obviously, the woman did not have a good reason for what she did. The only question that really matters is what can we do to make sure this never happens again? When we talked with Crystal Townsend, the mother of the original victim, we made a promise to her. We promised that we would do whatever we could to make sure this never happens again. Many people in Guam have made similar promises to us. They have told us that they also want to take action to make sure this never happens again. So what actions should we take? Well, we are grateful to Senator Rodriguez and the other senators who have co-sponsored this bill. Additionally, we are grateful to the men and women of the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center for working so closely with the senators to create this bill. We think it is a big step toward making sure this never happens again. We think there is value in requiring the treatment of people with mental illnesses, especially those who are incapable of voluntarily seeking treatment if they are a potential harm to themselves or others. Similarly, as the bill says, studies indicate this kind of care has been proven to greatly reduce incidence of violence and arrest. Arrests. There is value in treating patients with mental illness and making sure they get adequate care. Conversely, since tourism is such a large part of this community's economy, the cost of not implementing this bill could be detrimental to the island's image as a safe paradise vacation destination. For example, when this happened, my wife's first instinct was to do whatever she could to get us permanently away from the island. Prior to the attack, my wife and I always felt safe in Guam, no matter where we went. Since the attack, even though the vast majority of people living here are warm and friendly, we can't help but look over our shoulders. We can't help but wonder about other attacks that might happen if we do nothing. Since I'm in the military, my wife, my family and I are forced to move around quite a bit. In fact, I've recently been given orders to report to Virginia, and we will be leaving the island in July. When this happened, this horrified and sickened me. Even though it's a horrible event to go through, it feels good to finally see something positive. Above all, it is good to see so many people that want to take action to make things better. It feels good to know we are taking actions to make sure this never happens. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Esser, for your testimony. Well, that's now, or would Mrs. Esser like to add any? And please, you may, if you'd like to.
I can't say how good this makes me feel because everyone's support has been amazing. And it's not just for us, it's not, it's about the people of Guam and making sure that it's safe here. We were told recently that the last time any law had been changed was in 1970 when it came to mental health. And this shows that we're, you know, if we can make a positive change and not, and not just treat, I'm not going to say, sorry. I guess the biggest thing right now is, we feel that with this law, we could make a humongous change to make sure that we're not just protecting the people of Guam, but the person that, the people who are fighting mental illness and have mental illness, we're also helping them. Because by getting treatment, they are also going to be better off. So it's not just about the people of Guam and making it safer, it's also making it better for the people that are fighting mental illness and making sure that they continue their care. It's so hard, you know, when it comes to mental illness, there's so many different aspects. But if we can make sure that they stay on the right road, we will be also helping them out too. This is about them, and it's also about keeping Guam safe. I'm sorry.
Thank you very much, Alyssa, for that. Thank you. Mr. Vega?
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Senator Rodriguez and Senator Tony Ada. If I may, request the committee on senators that I defer my, I would like my medical director to go first, and then I'll follow. Thank you.
Good morning, Senators Rodriguez, Senator Ada. Let me introduce myself first. I'm Ariel Ishmael, I'm one of the psychiatrists at Guam Behavioral Health. I've been involved with the department for like, maybe the past three, four years. And during my provision of services at the department, and not only myself, but the other psychiatrists as well, we've noticed this gap in service. And part of what we were really advocating for is really to come, to create something like this, which is really in existence in like, so many states in the United States. And I guess we were just really fortunate enough that you visited us that day, and we discussed about the gaps in services. And I guess I was, I usually do not speak, but I was brave enough to like, tell you about this big gap in service that we have. And thank you for like, paying attention and like, taking actions, sir. I fully support this bill. Part of what I can relate to you is really, you know, the experiences I have when I see these kinds of patients, they are, they have true psychiatric conditions, you treat them, you give them medications, you provide service for them, and they respond really well to the treatment. And then, once they feel better, they get off the treatment. They decide, and it's their right to do that, to refuse the treatment and to stop the treatment. But unfortunately, what happens is, they deteriorate to the point that they become dangerous, not only to themselves, but to other people as well. And it puts a burden not only on the individual, it also puts a great burden on the families, and also, of course, the community, when they exhibit behaviors that affect individuals in the community. We've seen this time and time again, repeated over and over and over. And part of like, probably, the opposition to this is really, when do you begin to say that this person would need assisted outpatient treatment, and when do you begin to trample on his right to refuse treatment? And probably, the criteria will answer that. And one of the big criteria there is really, when they deteriorate, they deteriorate to the point that they become dangerous, not only to themselves, but to the community as well. So I think this bill will benefit a particular subset of those kinds of patients, but I think it will also help greatly in protecting the community, so that they will not deteriorate to the point that they will become dangerous to themselves or to others. And what I see that will be really most beneficial is really, if they adhere to this kind of treatment, that the burden that it really places on the families, that we've seen over the years, would be a lot less. And of course, the person will have the ability to be a protective member of society despite the mental illness. And that's what I'm looking at. And that's why I fully support this bill, Senator. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ishmael. And I just want to thank you also, Doc, for bringing this to our attention, and for really working with us in developing this piece of legislation. There was a lot of back and forth, a lot of input from the department. I also want to thank the intern you had, Mika Belahaja, for her work in putting into this piece of legislation too. So thank you very much. Mr. Vega?
Good morning, Senators. My name is Ray Vega, and I'm the Director for Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center. I'm here to fully support the proposed legislation. The clinical team has been, from Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, has been totally behind this initiative. We've discussed the pros and the cons, but the pros outweighs the con. We're here to provide testimony as far as the outcome of this legislation, as far as clinical treatment and services is concerned. There's no question that the, if we're able to pass this legislation, there is a target population, those small, that would be affected with this and would clearly benefit. The criteria is, to us, as we discuss it, is quite clear. There may be some individuals who will not fall under that category, but we also want to capture those that are falling under that category, wherein, given a successful and a compliant attitude toward treatment and services, they are a productive citizen in the community. So we are fully in support of this legislation. The most common, the questions that was asked of me is, what is the impact of this legislation to the cost for providing this service based on court order? It is less, it's, it's, on a maintenance level, we, the cost of providing services is less than when we see individuals who are acutely ill. What I'm trying to say is, if they're being maintained, they don't decompensate as often as possible. But if they're not in a compliance mode, they're not taking their medications, eventually, they will decompensate, and eventually end up in an acutely ill state, or maybe active psychosis. So the cost of providing services in an acute episode is more than providing services on a maintenance mode, because they would have to go to Guam Memorial Hospital for medical clearance. And then, if they've been medically cleared, they would be transferred to the inpatient unit at Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center. As we all know, it's cheaper to provide services at an outpatient basis than the inpatient. So as far as the financial impact, it's actually less costly for us to provide outpatient services than inpatient. I, for the record, I'd like to support this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vega. Mr. Pinaula?
Good morning, Senator Rodriguez and Senator Ada. I'm here to also throw my support behind Bill 115-33. We are in support of this bill for obvious reasons, for the safety factor for our community and our families, obviously. As the Director mentioned, when we are looking at maintenance, it's always easier and cheaper when we do preventive maintenance, and this is how we see it. It's a preventative maintenance procedure. When you help individuals who are at their home in a setting that they are comfortable with, rather than them being at the hospital or at our Guam Behavioral Health Wellness Center, it's way cheaper. The admission and the workup expense is dramatic, and it's a huge cost to the government of Guam and to the community, as opposed to going out to the patient's home and servicing them. So the preventive measure is something that we support as outpatient. This procedures and this operation actually is being done throughout many jurisdictions in the United States, so it's not uncommon. This is not a new area of medicine that we are embarking on. This actually does happen in other jurisdictions. We also think that it's wrong to have an individual decompensate, you know, or go through acute psychosis, when we can help them. And this is a procedure that we can offer, and we are happy to offer. So we are in support of this bill, and we'd like to thank you for introducing this legislation, and we hope that this measure passes and becomes law. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pinaula. Now I have Mr. Phil Tidinko, the Chief, sorry, the Chief Prosecutor, Office Attorney General.
Buenas tardes, Mr. Chairman, Senator Dennis Rodriguez, Senator Tony Ada. Phil Tidinko, on behalf of the Office Attorney General, Attorney General Elizabeth Barrett Anderson. Of course, she and I are both in support of the concept that strengthens our mental health laws to both safeguard the community, as well as safeguard the individual who's suffering from a severe psychiatric illness or disorder. Certainly, I think there was a need to update the statute. I haven't really analyzed, at least from a civil attorney perspective, because it appears that it'd be the civil attorneys who would have to participate in that, so I'll probably give a heads up that they probably should take a look at it. But in reviewing it real quickly within the last 24 hours, there, I just want to raise some potential amendments we may want to consider for, at least put that on the record. On page nine, you know, basically, it lists the petition, these are all the elements for requiring someone to qualify for the assisted outpatient treatment or commitment. I know under, between lines nine, more specifically down the lines 14 through 16, it uses the term, under Section 6, Sub-I, resulted in one or more acts, attempts or threats of serious violent behavior towards self or within others. We may want to consider using the language of attempts or threats of bodily or serious bodily injury, rather than just simply violent behavior, because then we have the issue of defining what is violent behavior. And/or also including references to Chapter 16 and 19, which are, which are the, of Title 9, which are the criminal offenses of all the different forms of assault, terrorizing, homicide. So you may want to, the point is, I'm trying to make it consistent with other statutes so that we can, the same thing occurs down on the same page in nine, on line 24. Again, you have, we use the term serious bodily harm, again, we might want to say or bodily harm or serious bodily injury, just so that, because there's a definition already in Title 9 that you can use, rather than us trying to figure out, you know, I'm trying to think of how a defense attorney would play with this, or how I would have played with it when I was a defense attorney. Again, there's that terminology on the next page, and between lines two and four, the use of serious physical harm. See, there's all different usages, so, so if we keep it consistent, I think it'll be a workable statute under, consistent with our other laws. Let's see. So I'm just going through the technical legal issues that jumped out at me. Let's jump ahead. Moment, let me make sure I didn't leave anything out. Okay. Another technical legal issue, on page 16, I think it's from line two through four, patients who physically resist or fail to, because the first, the first part of that indicates whichever center the patient chooses. And by the way, the use of the term patient, you may want to consult the behavioral mental health folks. I don't know if that's the verbiage that's used in the 21st century, I don't know if they still use the term patients. You may want to put patients, or clients, or consumers. I know it always changes. So you, you know, to be politically and correct with the research of how we refer to the folks who receive treatment, patient is the old medical model terminology. But anyway, where it says, patients who physically resist or fail to select a treatment location shall be, should be, I think it should read, shall be treated at a treatment center designated by GBHW or its designee. Just to be real clear, who's, who's going, in the event that the person is so disabled that they can't choose, and then so mental, I mean, I still call it mental health, but GBHW or its designee can actually, makes it clear that they will then select it. Let's see, those jumped out. Oh, and this one, I think is just a typo. On page 19, line 20, it says, individual, this is for the emergency evaluation, within 20, there's a 6 in there, I don't know why that's there, I think it's meant to be just within 24 hours of the individual's placement, just got to strike out the 6. And also above, I know that you restrict it to law enforcement, but I know sometimes transportation is done by GFD, so you may want to say, or GFD. Right? Sometimes, when they respond, they use the ambulance services sometimes. That's something to consider, of course, GFD may not agree to that, but sometimes it happens. Otherwise, I mean, that was all that I was able to, you know, legally try to scrub it real quickly, but I'll ask the civil side to take a look at it, because they would have to understand this process, once it becomes law, you know, how it's going to actually physically and operationally occur, the process. But I think the bottom line is that this is another very needed tool that can fill the gap when someone perhaps leaves the criminal justice system, and yet is still in need of further treatment, and there's this civil component that can also address them, even when they're not in the inpatient unit, because as I understand it, the practice is to, you know, once they're an inpatient, to immediately help them resolve whatever acute illness issues are going on, and then to immediately discharge them to outpatient. But, but if you sort of have this committed type outpatient treatment, then you can monitor it better, monitor their progress or lack of progress, and perhaps, and then avoid a person decompensating without being properly monitored. So again, we support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tidinko, for that. And the only request I have is that if the Civil Division is going to review it, if we can make this a priority, we're trying to see if we can get this heard as soon as possible on the floor.
Right. No, I understand, I'm not trying to hold it up, I just, I was just going to give it to them. I'm, you know, I'm, my role these days is purely criminal and prosecution, so I will, I would just simply pass it on to them, and then, this doesn't have to stop it, I mean, if there's any changes, we can always come back to you and-
Okay. But we'll take your recommendations today.
And propose amendments, but you know, at least quickly-
Yes.
Just my quick scrub of it, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. Thank you very much, sir. I just have a question for Guam Behavioral Health. You know, is it, is it a concern that if we have this program implemented now, that, I know you kind of mentioned about it, Ray, about the funding, right? And you also said this is meant for a specific target population, it's not a big population. There's a criteria for you to be able to be eligible for assisted outpatient treatment, so it's small. Is that a concern for you? Is that, you know, that once we implement this, you're going to need a whole lot of extra funding? Or is it, Ray, I think we talked about it, cost neutral?
Thank you, Senator. I think if we look at it, more than likely, this patient, person served already are established client. And as I mentioned earlier, it's cheaper to continue the therapeutic regimen for this individual on an outpatient basis, rather than when they, we see them, because they choose to not seek services for one reason or another, and they will be decompensated to a point wherein an inpatient admission is warranted, then it's going to cost the government more, not only from our psychiatric point of view, but they also have to be medically cleared. As we all know, there is a therapeutic workup that's more expensive, especially in acute phase, than on, than on a chronic- phase, than on a chronic phase. So if this legislation is passed, we're going to see, maybe it's budget neutral, but we're going to probably experience a reduction in the cost of providing services because they don't have to be treated in inpatient.
Great. Thank you very much. And I think also, in addition to that, Ray, is this correct, that you will see the positive results in the financial sense, the cost, right? But socially also, you know, that's where we're going to see the positive benefits, is that, you know, these individuals don't decompensate, they don't harm themselves or harm any other individuals in the community. And so I think if you look at it in that perspective, that it's really a win-win and a benefit.
Very quickly, Senator, it's a win-win, because persons served like those target populations, when they are medically maintained or through mental illness, drugs, and behavioral health issues, they are a productive member of this community. So the end result is actually, it would result to less public assistance requests, because now they can gainfully employ themselves. So I don't see any negative impact at all if we are able to pass this legislation. That's from my point of view. We're here to provide support as far as the clinical aspect of providing care and the financial impact of this legislation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Vega. Vice Chairman, any questions or comments? You're good. Okay. If not, is there anyone else that wishes to testify? Yes?
I wasn't expecting to... Good morning, Senator Tonyada and Senator Dennis Rodriguez. As I was listening to this, I was thinking of the applicability of this to our children population, in particular those that are transitioning to adulthood. Because oftentimes, the challenge for them is that once they're 18, they feel they don't need services, yet they do need services. And we see that when they turn 18, they tend to not take care of their treatment, they refuse treatment, and we want to prevent them from decompensating further, that would escalate to the point of not just harming themselves or others. The other thing, I want to echo what Dr. Ishmael mentioned about the clinical impact assessed on clients. When clients or patients have or have decompensated at that level, they often do not realize that they need help, so they don't seek help. And I think that's a real concern, and that's when they do things that are quite a concern to the community and to themselves. So I fully support this despite not really knowing the whole content of the bill. Just want to say that.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Ampinko, for that testimony. Great. Is there anything else that I don't wish us to add? Or any questions? Mr. Asser?
Once again, just thanks again on behalf of my wife and my whole family. Thanks again to everyone here for, you know, taking action to make things better. We really believe this is a step towards making sure this never happens again.
Thank you very much, Mr. Asser. I want to also thank you again for coming here this morning, and for your courage, you and Alyssa, and your children. It takes a lot to be able to come out the way you have, considering what you have experienced. And so I want to thank you, and we'll work hard to ensure that this is moved forward. Hopefully, we can see some progress before you do leave Island. Okay? So thank you very much, sir. Okay. We'll now move on, and maybe the behavioral health representatives can stay. We have Bill 116-36. 116-33, I'm sorry, is an act to authorize the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center to fully implement its fee schedule and the provisions of subsections 86, 1, 1F of Chapter 86, Title 10, relative to Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services Fund. What this bill does is lift the somewhat freeze that is currently, that the department has now in preventing you from billing and collecting fees for services that you provide. It was about maybe two years ago, or three years ago, that this body had passed the mental health fee schedule, something that's never been done. And that was, you know, a big step forward, you know, that was done in implementing or establishing the fee. However, there was a provision, as I mentioned, that prevented you until you are CMS certified. We understand that the department, prior to this enactment of that law, was already billing for certain services, was collecting fees. But because of this measure, of that measure, then those fees, those collections stopped, and the billing stopped. We want to make sure that we give the resources to the department, that the department needs to continue operating efficiently, and so we're moving this piece of legislation forward. Okay? Mr. Vega?
Good morning again, Chairman, Senator Dennis Rodriguez, and Senator Tonyada. Good morning, and half a day. Thank you, Senator Rodriguez, for introducing an amendment to the public law, 31-239, that will allow Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center to bill for its services. For the record, I am in support of Bill 116-33. Although this is, we're talking about financial impact, but I would like to take this opportunity to let the public know that anyone who requires our services will get the services they deserve, whether or not they have the ability or ability to pay for those services, whether they have money to pay, or whether they have insurance to cover for their services. We are very sensitive to the target population that we serve. They are a vulnerable group, and in the initial phase of implementing the public law, we actually took to safeguard some concerns that once we start billing, they will not seek services. We did a pilot study, actually, from October of 2013 to December of 2014. We tried the process. Initially, as expected, there's a lot of questions, so I don't have money, so am I still going to get the services? The answer is yes. Initially, there's a lot of questions, until finally, four months after we tried to do an informational and awareness campaign, that you're still going to continue to receive the same services. We will not discriminate based on your ability or inability to pay. We have less questions beginning February, when we started actually doing the billing and collecting. Our census have shown that there is no reduction in the number of consumer or patients served because the department started to bill. So in essence, for the next four months, February, March, April, May, until the Attorney General has rendered an opinion that it would be illegal to continue to bill, we stop billing. But for purposes of getting an idea of the population we serve, Senator, financially class-wise, the 80% to 85% of the patients served are consumer, belong to the 3Ms and the self-pay. 47% are under Medicaid. Medicare is about 12%, and self-pay is about 20%. The reason why I'm trying to emphasize this is that I just want to make sure that the Guam Legislature is fully aware that despite our billing effort, we don't really anticipate a huge revenue generation, as was previously reported in the initial approval of that public law, 21-239. What I'm saying is, our collection effort, even if we know that they can afford, would be tempered by less aggressiveness, because we still would like to continue to see them. We're not like a medical clinic, we're in, they can do an aggressive collection. I know there's an avenue, tax garnishment, but that would have a negative impact on the consumers, because now you garnish their tax. I don't want to take that route. My target population is very much different. They are unpredictable, they will continue to get the services, and these are populations that has to be chronically monitored. So it's not like pneumonia, we're in, just give antibiotic and then you're gone. What I'm saying, I just want to make sure that the Guam Legislature understands that we don't anticipate a huge revenue for this individual, but we will continue to serve And I would like to repeat that for the record and for the public to know. They will continue to get the services from Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center, irrespective of their ability or inability to pay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vega. Mr. Vega, I think also, what is important to note is that the Medicaid, the state plan is being amended to include behavioral health services, right? I don't know if that has already been approved, but I know that that was a, that's an effort that's ongoing now. Is that correct?
That is correct, Senator. And I think we had the opportunity to meet with our technical assistant consultant, Jim Watering. We had that ability to meet with them here and in Washington, and I think, I'd like to thank Annie, too. He was able to get an email message from Jim Watering about the Medicaid, that we could still continue to bill Medicaid despite the CMS. And I'll give her that opportunity later on. She's been working with our public health sector on how we could bill for the services. We're not here for the profit, but we're here for the sustainability of the services that we provide. Reason for that, some of our services are federally funded. So we try, as you and Annie know, we try to, through Annie's creativeness, we try to initiate sustainability measures through Guam Legislature, like the bill that are the public law that would sustain children's services through the tax property valuation. So we're trying to find ways to make sure that beyond the grant, or when grant expires, that we have sustainability and continue to provide the services.
That's right. Thank you. And that leads me to now lifting of this impediment in billing and collecting. I think, you know, that property, the percentage is very small, but you add that with what you could collect now from the other third-party payers, I think that's where the sustainability aspect comes into play, right?
That is correct, Your Honor.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Vega. Mr. Penala?
Good morning again, Senator Rodriguez and Senator Ada. We are definitely in support of this bill. You're absolutely right. The collection that we're looking at is very minimal, but even with that, that makes a difference in the ability of the department to provide additional services. Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center is not looking at standard of care, we're looking at the best care. We are all in agreement, to the Guam Legislature, the Governor's Office, the Governor himself, and Guam Behavioral Health. We want to serve our people. Giving us the ability to establish a fee schedule and to collect some fees, this is service for our people. We are going to provide them, again, with better care than we're providing them now. We need everybody on Guam to understand, and the community at large, just because we establish a fee schedule and we, you know, charge for services, doesn't mean that we are going to diminish our service to the community. In fact, I'm going to echo again the Director's sentiment. Regardless of your ability to pay, you can come to Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center and receive services. You can come, and we will take care of you, we will serve you. We are interested in doing the best that we can, and we hope that we can get your support and this legislation passes through, so that we can establish this fee schedule. It also does a number of other things, too. It helps us as managers to look at where our expenses, excuse me, where our expenses are. And we can target, you know, services around those areas as well, as well as seek additional funding, in the case of Medicare and Medicaid. So we'd like to thank you for introducing this legislation, and we are full support. Thank you.
Mrs. Ampinko?
Honorable Senators, I just want to thank you also for helping us with the billing, with Medicaid billing, and also trying to find resources to support the sustainability of systems of care. And yes, Medicaid has informed us verbally that the regional office has approved, but we have not seen the written document from CMS. And according to the certification of CMS, Bill Watering, who has been our consultant from Georgetown and contracted with SAMSA, has been working with us in the creation of the billing for Guam, and he himself has noted that CMS does not certify, but by them approving our ability to charge, that in itself is certifying the payment of Medicaid for the systems of care services. So I just want to thank you for all the many years that we have worked together to make this a reality, and we do want to move forward with this, and we continue to help people that are indigent, that have no means of paying for the services. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ampinko. Okay. Vice Chairman, any questions? Thank you very much. Just a quick question. So now, even with establishing a fee schedule, the drug rehab program that you have there now, you're not able to also bill for that, or you haven't been billing for that, right? For, let's say, self-pay individuals that would like to come in to seek treatment, or, you know, family members who might want to refer? You're not able to bill, or you haven't billed that as well?
Senator, with respect to drug and alcohol treatment, unfortunately, there is a lot of restriction, according to the drug and alcohol supervisor. Medicaid would only pay for 20 hours of services per year, so we're not going to see a lot of revenue there. However...
How about on self-pay or private insurance? Do they cover?
And that's, again, something that we would only find out when we go back again and actively collect through the insurance. As we know, there may be some restriction as far as whether drug and alcohol or their psychotic episode precedes one or the other. And it's almost the same with social security benefit. If there's, you know, if their acute psychosis was a result of drug abuse, rather than a mental illness to begin with, there's always a question of whether it's going to be covered or not. We will not be able to find out until we start billing them. But talking about Medicaid, it's little revenue generation for the services that we provide, as 20 hours per year. We are already providing the service to our nonprofit organization, with a little help from federal funding and appropriation from Guam Legislatures. So the overall impact is, we will, you know, even if we start billing... So the overall impact is, we will, you know, even if we start billing, the one that really subsidize the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center is the government of Guam. So for little revenue that we can generate, we may be able to improve our services, reach out more to the, to the community, and at the same time, an ability to open new services. As you know, we have plans on, on the new beginning, so...
And that's where I was, I was headed, too, is that if, I don't know if you have prepared something where, from what you can anticipate from these collections, that if you're now able to collect, you know, what, how you can establish that new beginning inpatient treatment program that we've been talking about, right? And if, if you can, you know, at some point, maybe provide us, again, I know that that was provided, or it wasn't provided during any discussion or any legislation, but I know there was a projection based on, if you, if you do bill, based on your different category, the different payer groups, what you can expect. Do you have it readily available that you can submit to us?
Senator, for the gross billing, it is predicated whether or not the service provided is billable or not. When I say billable or not, meaning, the only criteria that services are billable is when they are rendered by a licensed service provider. We have other professionals that are going through the licensure requirement, so the data that we have right now, on the gross billing, on the gross billing, there's only 37% that is billable. Recalculate that with their ability to pay or not, it's very small, but 1%, 2% is something that we could truly benefit. The collection we have for the past four months was roughly about 7,000 to 9,000 only, and that's coming from the private commercial insurance, like StayWellNetCare. With that in mind, you know, I'm just very conservative, that we would be very happy if we could collect probably 12% to 15% of our gross billing. We're no different from, from GMH, as far as what is billable is what's not, and the formula for payment. Again, we have good payers, like Take Care, Net Care, but when they have copayment, and it's an out-of-pocket for the consumers, we also have to factor that, that, that is transferred into the self-pay, and you know our self-pay already is at 20%. So I'm going to say it, that we will not be very aggressive in collecting from the self-pay, at least you would turn them away, or for those who have no insurance at all. We will aggressively pursue collection efforts with the commercial insurance. I just want to make sure that that's, that's understood, because I don't want them to be out in the street because of their misconception that they cannot come back because they owe the government.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, great. Is there anything else you'd like to add? If not, we'll conclude this public hearing on Bill 116-33. The time now is 10, three minutes before 10:00 AM. Thank you very much.